And people of other countries, and I'm honored to be one of the educators selected to represent the United States next year. I'm eager to share the wealth of knowledge I've accumulated while working in the district for the past nine years. What we do in District 96 is unique, and people in Scandinavia need to learn about it. In Norway, a roving scholar facilitates workshops on best practices in American education, literature, history, and current events for teachers and junior high school students all over the country. Next year, I hope to set up many opportunities for students in Riverside to engage in honest dialogue with students in Norway, for example, through email exchanges or Skype sessions. Upon my return, I plan to infuse my lessons with the insights I've gained while abroad. They will come in varied forms. For example, I might introduce students to short stories from previously unknown authors, discuss Norse myths, or share fresh progressive ideas about methodology practices with staff. Dialogue about international education will help us grow as a district. This opportunity will allow me to pursue work that is vital to my existence. Travel has been a major motivating factor in my life, and I have found that I better understand myself, the American culture, and my role in the world when I leave the comforts and familiarity of home to explore the unknown. This is exactly what Mark Twain encourages in Innocence Abroad when he writes, "Travel is fatal to prejudice, bigotry, and narrow-mindedness." We fear what we don't understand, so I'm on a lifelong quest to learn, listen, and explore, in the hopes that I combat ignorance and stereotypes. So far, I've studied abroad for several months in Ecuador, Spain, Mexico, and China, and I've taught in Japan for two years before starting to work at Hauser. Each summer, I aim to explore an area of the world to get to know other cultures and to connect with people. So far, I've seen 46 countries. Gaining these new perspectives transforms me. I strive to be a contributing, thoughtful member of society and a dedicated global citizen. Education is the perfect outlet for me to share this passion, as I thrive on facilitating lessons that expose students to the necessity of being open-minded and responsible citizens. While working in the field of education for young adults -- excuse me, with young adults for the past 11 years, I have found myself to be fully engaged and inspired. Lima Bowie, winner of the 2011 Nobel Peace Prize, captures one of the reasons why. The youth of the world are the agents of change. Working with teenagers offers limitless potential. Young adults see the world as possessing infinite possibilities and are not inhibited by fear. They take risks. I see this daily in the classroom. They're willing to listen, explore, and research, as long as they find value in the work they are doing. Teens are curious, malleable, and expressive, and I'm honored to accompany them on their journeys. Being an educator comes with great responsibility as well as tremendous potential. I embrace it and accept the challenge. Again, thank you so much for your consideration of granting this sabbatical and for all you do to make District 96 the outstanding learning environment that it is.
Thank you, Ms. Jack. That was very eloquent.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any proposed changes that people would like to make to the agenda? If there are no changes, we move on to the superintendent's report.
Just for the point of procedure, when Martha gives you a superintendent's report, it's not really for board discussion. However, if there's any topic that she raises, or I raised tonight, and you want to further discuss it, simply ask me or ask Jeff, say, could we put that on the next board agenda so we can flush that out better? You know, I've had some questions. Otherwise, the superintendent will have a very short agenda if they think they're going to have to discuss at length everything that they put on there. And I have just some brief things here. Kindergarten registration. We had our first district-wide meeting with all the kindergarten. We have now over 60 fully registered, close to 70, I think, with our -- we have a handful of people that did not want to use the online, still use the old paper, which we'll probably eliminate next year. But, you know, we are -- this is their first time using a reduction of the actual registration cost from $75 down to $42, if they get it done by April 15th. So we expect to have a very accurate number, hopefully by April 15th, because everybody seemed to be motivated by that effort to lower their cost. 1617 calendar. You've already approved it. Yeah, go ahead.
One question, just about the online registration. Did it go pretty smoothly, the online portion of it?
Murphy's Law came into play.
Not my law.
Not your law.
Yes, not my law, yes, yes.
Murphy's Law in general.
Right.
And here's what we learned from this. We asked everybody to bring their original documents so we could verify everything, but then we sent them to another place where they had to copy them. All we had to do, if our brain was operating properly, is saying, "Bring a copy along with you." And then, well, the long lines ended up where they had to wait for one copy machine. And we did, at the last minute, we opened up two more copies machines, but we got everybody out of there in 90, I think, 92 minutes. So that, you know, everybody was processed totally. But that's still, I never will go to Disney World again because I can't stand waiting in line. You can imagine me waiting in a line. I went once, never again. So, yeah, so I have tremendous empathy for those people that had to wait in line for their copies, and they were all really nice, no complaints. They're all, you know, they're young people that are having their first kindergarten kids. But at the same time, I was not happy with that.
So we can smooth the process out next year.
We can improve it. And Don and Marla here, are you right? Can we get it down to like 60 minutes next? Hopefully, our lesson, less than that next year, yeah.
Minute to win it.
So, yes, we learned a lesson from our first try, and we'll make it better next time.
It's good to know.
The 1617 calendar. The only thing I want, I don't want you to be mad at Pat and I for recommending this calendar on the next election day, because we're going to probably have a big turnout. My guess is, we had a big turnout today, actually, you know, pretty unusual for a primary. And there is pros and cons. Some schools give Election Day off. The downside about that, from my point of view, if you give parents, with early voting, you give them off Tuesday, and the kids have to come in Monday, a lot of parents go, "I'm gonna take a four-day weekend." And then you have low attendance on Monday. Not a good thing. You know, so, you know, there's pros and cons. Yes, it would be nice, you know, to have the schools empty where we don't have to have -- we have to hire security people, you know, so the parents are, you know, so the voters aren't wandering down to the bathrooms and all, all over the school. We do have security issues, but we're going to suffer through that unless, I bring it up to you, I don't want you to second-guess us in November. Our recommendation is still to stick with the calendar and approve.
I think historically, we don't cancel school on those days.
You've had schools historically.
Every year, it's been a discussion, though.
I have to keep it the same.
No, I mean, maybe not at the board level, but I know amongst parents and in the PLT meetings, it has always been a discussion.
I just didn't want you to, you know, think that we haven't thought of that. We asked, we have, and we're still sticking with our recommendation. Springfield field trip. Now, Marla, would you like to just give a quick summary of our issues there?
So, in response to a couple of questions that came about with respect to this Springfield field trip, I wanted to do a little bit of a recap. We did some information digging. We were asked how many students did not attend the trip. There were 33 of the 230 students in 7th grade that did not attend. The reasons they did not attend the trip were typically the child never giving the parent the permission slip. That was one of the reasons. Another one was the child just opted not to go, didn't feel like going. And there were a few that just didn't choose to share with us the reason why. We did provide six scholarships. Of the 33 that did not go, only 13 of those were free and reduced lunch students, and we did provide six scholarships. All 13 of those families were contacted regarding scholarships and opted not to take advantage of that. We did a little research on why we've been using Bright Spark and the benefits to using that company versus having a teacher facilitate the trip. Couple of things is, one is the relationship with the Board of Tourism. That was the biggest reason for using that type of service. They orchestrate all the meals, lunches, dinners, all the restaurants, in addition to all of the venues that they visit, and it does cover all the entrance fees. They do provide insurance on our students as well. And so the facilitation of even those logistics, the lunches and dinners and entrance fees and getting everything taken care of in one, through one company, logistically saves everybody a lot of time and frustration. They also, because they're a larger company, are able to orchestrate the visits to the different areas, to scaffold so that only one of our buses at a time is at each location, so not all 180 kids are at one spot, and they're able to rotate. We do take up four coach buses, so if we did something ourselves, we'd still have to pay the transportation, the entrance fees, figure out the meals, and find four different docents amongst our staff to do some of the, you know, the informational pieces of that. If there is a problem, the company deals with it, and they intervene and problem-solve on behalf of our students and our staff while they're there. This year, we had a student in a wheelchair, and they made sure that everything was completely wheelchair-accessible, and that child didn't miss one of the opportunities along the way. So every restaurant was wheelchair-accessible, every venue, they made sure was handicapped-accessible and prepared for that. So they see a lot of obstacles to switching to us locally managing it for all of those reasons. So at this point, the recommendation would be to remain to use, using this company as we have been doing, just because of the many benefits it offers. If we wanted to pursue not doing that, I don't know that we would have the support physically, because of the amount of hours and time it would take somebody to prepare.
Let's give you a brief report. Again, if you want to let me know, or to let Jeff know if you want to further discuss this, this is an item that I think has been brought up, but I thought you needed feedback about some of the issues that were previously raised.
And then, just a little bit on field trips in general. We are, this year, tackling through our field trips the Peggy Notabert Nature Museum, the Brookfield Zoo, the Museum of Science and Industry, the Field Museum, the Morton Arboretum, and local Riverside places across all grade levels. And every grade level is going on a minimum of two field trips, and four of them are going on three. So I think we've expanded that repertoire. We've made sure it's consistent across the buildings and that the experiences are all curricularly aligned, so we're in good shape.
Thank you, Martha. Before an after-school care survey, there was a number of, a full discussion of this a year ago, last spring. The issue popped up to us from the rec department. I thought our first requirement would be to see what the customers, the client satisfaction is, and I think we have 37 responses, generally very positive, with a couple of exceptions. So there was a high level of satisfaction. If you want to entertain, you know, again, get to Jeff or me, if you want to entertain this as a full board discussion and bring it back as, you know, as an option, looking at other options, at this point, with the satisfaction level that we, we, as an administration, see no reason to make a recommendation at this point, so.
Can I, one quick follow-up question? Just curious, the mail, the surveys you received back, were they amongst all schools? Or did you?
All schools.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, we didn't, we only got 37. We wish we had gotten more, but.
Well, how many people are in the program, again? 100 and some?
It's over 100, right. I can't give you, 121?
More than 100.
There you go. They're pretty close, over 100.
Just not a good return rate, really.
A couple of things. The consultant agreement for Pat and me, I just want to make, point to the public. The board hired us for 100 days. We're not going to use the 100 days. We have put money, we're going to take, leave money on the table, and that money is going to be used in this consultant contract for working with Martha in a transition time. So it's not, even though we have money specified there, it's money that you are not going to spend this year that you already budgeted for and that you earmarked for us. So we are not going to spend the 100 days, and we'll leave days on the table for transition work with Martha in the new year. That, and one other thing, I promised you that, I gave you some recommendations for staff, for administrative professional development, and you approved, I forget the exact dollar amount, and I said, "If anything else pops up, I will bring it to your attention." Something came up today, and I apologize if it's not on the board packet. Don is here, he's the culprit. Don got an invite on Friday of last week for, from Apple, to work, to come and work with the Apple Education Engineering Team. It's free lodging, free conference, but we have to pay a trip out to California in April.
Does airfare make?
We have to pay for airfare only. To me, if we get the, if we do it right away, we might be able to do that for $200 to $300. And do I think it's worth it? Yes, for spending three days with Apple Education Engineering, and since we spend so much on Chromebooks and investment in Apple and iPads and so forth.
I thought we were sort of transitioning away from Apple, is that what you said?
Yes.
At the desktop level, we still have 575 iPads, and this is really focused on the new iOS that's coming out, which adds a player for education and management by teachers. It's very, they're targeting education. And so how we manage them will very likely change in how we manage the licensing support as well.
I don't like to surprise you, but you got it on Friday, and we're not going to have a board meeting until April, and it'll be in California at our next board meeting. Is that, I think it's about the same time.
There's no reason that the board needs to approve this.
No.
Is this informational?
It's more informational, but I told you, if there was any additional cost, that I promised you publicly that I would bring it to your attention, and this was not on the list.
All right. And we didn't have a general budget. We had a very specific.
I gave you the estimated cost of all the administrative professional development activities, and I gave you it back in September. And I said, "If anything's added, I would bring it to your attention," and this just popped up. And I apologize for the timing of it.
And, all right, now, thank you so much, and I do like the fact that it was an itemized budget.
It was, yeah, back in September, but this wasn't added. That's it? All right, I'll shut up.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda?
I would love to read the consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the previous meeting, minutes of the February 16th, 2016 closed session meeting, and minutes of the February 16th, 2016 regular business meeting, C, minutes of the February 23rd, 2016 closed meeting, and D, minutes of the February 23rd, 2016 open session special meeting. Item two, personnel report, including the consultant agreement that Dr. Powell had mentioned for Dr. Powell and Mr. Pat, $75 an hour, not to exceed $3,000 for the transition for the new superintendent, also including an employment agreement for David Sellers as the interim Director of Finance and Operations, beginning July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. Item three, the resolution of non-renewal of a non-tenured first-year teacher at Hauser, another resolution for dismissal of educational support personnel at Central, and a resolution for the dismissal of a part-time support personnel at Ames. Moving on to item three, the payables pre-list as of February 29th, 2016. Item four, the payables pre-list as of March 15th, 2016. Item five, the Windows Server Active Directory Implementation Project, and item six, the Full Byte Scholarship for Lynn Janek, who spoke earlier tonight.
Linda, are there any items that anyone would like to have taken off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing that there are no other items that people could take off, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Marjorie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Ms. Mangia?
Hi.
Ms. Klyver?
Hi.
Ms. Rockaway?
Hi.
Ms. Morello?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi. The next item on the agenda is the, any comments from the Riverside Educational Council? I don't see Mr. House here, so I assume there are none. Then we move on to board member comments. Does anyone have any comments about any activities that they attended recently, or?
I would, I would like to just report that my daughter had a fabulous time at the Springfield field trip, and all her friends did as well.
I heard great things about it as well.
Yeah, my son enjoyed that as well.
I would like to say one thing, I think I talked to Dr. Powell about it today. I love the increased communication that has been sent home to families over Facebook and email about the awards and accolades the students have been getting, like the West 40 speech and drama, the math and science, the robotics club. I thought, heard a lot of people talking about it, and so I really like, I think that's such a good, positive way to highlight what's going on, because there's a lot of things I didn't even know was going on, so, so thanks for doing that, whoever's, whoever's doing that.
Please help her do it.
Thank you. So then we move on to the reports from the different committees. Education Committee, Sherri, do you have any reports?
Yes, we have a brief robotics club discussion and summer school catalog, so I'll need you to it.
Thanks, Sherri. So the robotics club, we just wanted to highlight tonight because it's in its inaugural year. This is the first year we've offered a robotics club over at Hauser, and it's a Vex Robotics Club, and it was sponsored by Mary Banholzer and Christina Bettencourt. And you see the picture of all the students that participated this year, and the club met the month of October through the month of March, and built their own robots. So how does it work? They designed robots with motors and different belts and gears. They had specifications that they had to be built to. They wrote and customized the programs that actually made the robots move. And then they had to perform certain autonomous functions on their own in the competition that they took part in. So they learned the importance of cooperation and working together. They engaged in an engineering design cycle and had to redesign in the moment when things didn't go well. So we just wanted to share a little bit about that, because it was a brand-new club, and it was really popular, and I know kids got closed out of it. And so we are looking at embedding the STEM class next year, which will incorporate some design and modeling principles and give more students the opportunity to do this kind of thing in the classroom as well as outside of the classroom. So it was really exciting. It was a very big success. It was a regional competition that they participated in, and everyone's robot at least scored some points the first time out. So that was exciting for our students, so we wanted to share that.
Yeah, actually, I attended the competition. My son was involved in the club, and that was really having good for the kids. One thing that was really good was that they do have, there were a lot of teams there that had done it many times, and were, you know, they had very, more sophisticated robots. So I think they gave the kids some opportunity to see, okay, well, next year, you know, we can do this or that, and then, you know, improve things. So it's, I think it was a really good first year, though.
Thank you. The next item under the Education Committee report is actually the summer school catalog. You have that in your board packets. We're going to be releasing that. It's a PDF, so it'll be released tomorrow with all of the course offerings in it. It will go out a couple of ways. We're going to send it out School Messenger as an attachment. It's going to be posted on the website with a hot link. The summer school website will be up and running tomorrow with it as well, and all of the Facebook and website pages will have it posted. The registration will not begin until after the spring break. We wanted to be able to get our invitations out to skill-building students so that everybody had the same opportunity to register for the enrichment courses, because some students may only be taking one skill-building, and then we want them to also take an enrichment if they would like. So we wanted a fair shot at all the classrooms for all students. So registration will begin right after spring break, and the skill-building invitations will go out that Monday that we get back from the break. So we're ready to go. Just wanted to know if you had any questions about the summer school catalog.
So the, the skill-building, that's the math and the ELA, right? I don't, I don't see that mentioned in the catalog.
It's actually at the very top of the catalog. It says that skill-building will be by invitation only. What happened last year, the classes were in the catalog, and then anyone thought they could register for them, and we didn't want to send out a misperception that anyone can register for remedial, the remedial classes. Those are by invitation. So it does, there's a blurb at the top of the catalog that states that.
Yeah, I missed that. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Marla. Sherri, anything else, sir?
Yes, the math pilot has been ongoing and very busy, and so I kind of talked to Merrill, and I said it'd be nice to have some comments or to see how it's going, and maybe some photos of what's happening, because it's hard for us to know. So she's going to give us a little taste of what the kids have been doing in class.
Do you want me to do it now or during Old Business?
We have it later on.
Oh, you want it later? That's fine.
And he stuck it under Old Business, because we had reported on it before, or is that what you want?
Oh, that's fine. We can do it later.
Might as well keep the same, yeah, keep the same schedule. Unless you want to talk about now, I don't think it matters.
No, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Want to talk about now or?
I can go for it. It's right there. Right, just saying, go ahead. Yeah.
I think, I think the board has to agree to move it in the agenda, but it's fine with me.
We can wait for it. It's all right.
Anyway, everyone agreeable to having the math pilot program now?
Yes.
Yes, I'm agreeable.
Whatever. It's kind of exciting stuff.
That is.
So, you know, I get excited about this stuff. So we've been engaged in the math pilot since February. At the, at one of the last board meetings, I spoke about us entering into that pilot, and we've got two classrooms at every equal at grade level, plus the bilingual class, plus the two math interventionists working on it. So we wanted to know, what are they saying? So I broke this down into the primary classrooms and the intermediate classrooms, and these are actually quotes from teachers at first. There's a lot of hands-on things going on, so I'll just highlight a few of these. You'll see challenging and rigorous. Students are using a lot of manipulatives to solve problems. It's building on skills previously taught. I love the quote under the picture, and those are actually pictures of students using the materials. I am loving the math talks. They are getting my students thinking critically and differently from one another. Whether or not we adopt Math in Focus, I will forever incorporate math talks. That's great to hear, because that's a critical part of how we should be teaching math regardless of the program. So you see that the strategies are coming through in this pilot that we want in good math instruction, whether it's this program or any other. More from K-2, there are students working with the program in the manipulatives. Again, children working with a variety of materials every day, supporting a variety of learning styles and levels of understanding. That was one thing we were really looking for in the program, was the differentiated piece. Each lesson is supported with the reteaching, the extra practice, and the enrichment is another one that I wanted to point out. So they are seeing the opportunity to meet kids' needs at every level, and I like the last one. See smiles and excitement every day. And then from 3rd through 5th grade, the teachers are loving the interactive lessons when they do the hands-on activities, learning with peers. The program's very strong, excellent tool. And that quote in the corner, that's hard to see. It's so refreshing to have a program that challenges our students yet keeps them interested and engaged in the work. You see a lot of the same comments that you heard from the middle school teachers with the Carnegie Program, so that it's nice to see that it's aligning with what our expectations are, K through 8. These are some more comments. Again, you see the math talks coming up again. The vocabulary and language is a big one, and it's embedded, and it forces the students to slow themselves down because they have to think about what they're doing. I like this comment, "The number of light bulbs that go on during one class session is exciting and encouraging." So again, a lot of great feedback from teachers. I was in a classroom the other day, and these are from our 5th grade students. What they're saying, this was after a lesson when they were working with the decimals and the place-value chips. The colors and numbers on the chips help you see the differences between the whole number side and the decimal side. Actually seeing the decimals move when multiplying helps. I get it now. I keep forgetting the decimal side, so doing this helps me remember. So that manipulative piece is really important. The 3rd graders were so cute the other day when I was in there. I was asking them, I said, "So, you know, do you see a difference now between how, what you were doing before with math?" And they said, "We love this. We actually asked Ms. Olman to teach math." I said, "That's a good sign." Kids who didn't like math before were telling me, you know, "I didn't like it before. No, I like it." So it's doing its job in terms of engaging and motivating the students. We put the materials on display for parents as of March 1st. They're at every school. They're right back here. We took all the displays down for tonight, so you didn't have them shining in the background. But they're all on display here, the manipulatives, some of those are up there. Notifications went out to all families that the opportunity to preview was there with the preview feedback form. Many buildings have had parents looking at the materials. I've had people stop me in the hallways and tell me, but I only had two actual feedback sheets that have come back. They both said exceeding expectations. Two is not a large sample size out of, you know, 120 kids that might be getting the program right now, but I feel like no news is good news as well. Nobody's out there telling me to pull it from the classroom. So right now, all is going well. We're going to be regrouping right after spring break to reevaluate it on the rubric that we used to select it, to be sure it's still doing what we thought it would do with respect to our metrics that we use. So we'll be looking at it that way. But right now, I have to say, everything's looking pretty positive about the way it's looking so far. about the way it's going to go.
That's very encouraging. That's great. Thanks, Maureen.
Rich is not here, but he's asked David to fill in for him.
You skipped me.
I was going to say, you need policy?
Policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
It's okay. I don't have much to say. We just received the Press Plus Issue 91 materials, and we will present them as first reading at the April committee of the whole meeting. And just another reminder, if there's any policies that any board members want to discuss at the next policy meeting, please send them my way. I'm aware of them.
Excellent. Mr. Sellers, would like to use some update on the construction projects.
These materials were forwarded to Mr. Regan for his feedback, and he said, okay, go ahead and cover them at the board meeting. The first page where you see green provides the actual bid results. You'll notice that there are still some quite uncompleted projects but are still expected to be finished by the end of the summer. The electrical upgrades, condensate replacement, exterior door replacement, some Ames main office work, the security cameras is an agenda item four tonight, so there's a question mark on that, drainage seepage problem. Those are still things that we have yet to tackle as far as getting contractors lined up. The next page, stop me, well, I can come back with questions. The next page is a kind of a, the first page is what I would characterize as a boilerplate for communicating any request for the use of a construction allowance. There is a difference between the use of a construction allowance and a legally-defined change order. It's ordinary for school districts to build in a construction allowance. It's only after the construction allowance is exhausted that one would actually be processing a change order. In this context, I put a blank next to a dollar amount, and Dr. Powell, you know, he encourages that to be discussed at our next committee of the whole meeting. Basically, that's going to be the board's extending to the administration some degree of latitude as far as being able to authorize the continuation of work by the contractor when there's unforeseen construction condition, there's a sense of urgency, there is a need in order to keep the project on a critical path.
Without calling a special board meeting to get approval.
Right. In my past experience, that threshold amount was $20,000, but that was for, you know, pretty large-scale projects. I wouldn't, you know, it's really up to the pleasure of the board as to what that dollar amount is as far as your comfort level is concerned.
So this is, can I equate that to change orders? Is that the?
It's a use of a construction allowance. First paragraph explains that we have a $30,000 construction allowance for the, let's see, that's the elevator project at $100,000 for the paving.
Okay. What does that mean exactly? So $30,000, does that mean that we paid extra money upfront to get an allowance, or what is?
Yes. That was awarded in the bid.
So we paid $30,000 extra to get the?
Well, we haven't actually paid it.
Okay.
It's, we told the contractors, build that into your bid.
Right. Send the bid.
If we don't use the $30,000, if we don't use the $100,000, then at the closeout of the project, that money just gets unspent. There's no contractual obligation for us to pay the contractor an unused construction allowance.
Can you tell me, in your experience, how much, how often does that money get returned? I'm just curious. Is it partial most of the time?
I've been involved in probably, over my career, you know, $90 million of construction, and I would say you probably get 50 cents on the dollar.
Yeah, so some of it's a thing.
And depending upon the type of project, you can assume that the construction allowance is going to get used.
What does the construction allowance get spent on?
Unforeseen construction conditions or changes to the scope of the project that require additional funding.
Okay, I'm with you.
So the $30,000 for the elevators, if we make some changes or there are unforeseen circumstances, that's going to be, cost us extra money. The first $30,000 of that comes under this category of construction allowance.
Right.
And, but we pay that. It's like in this case, for example, with this electrical, with the upgrade, the electrical, that's going to cost us an extra $3,564. That's going to come under the $30,000, but it's actually extra money out of our pocket.
Well, it is and it isn't, because the definition of the elevator award is $489,500. The $30,000 is within that dollar amount.
Okay, so if we spend nothing, we say zero, zero of the $30,000, we get $30,000 back?
Then it goes $459.
Comes back to us. Right. Okay.
All right. To what degree will you be involving, let's say, Rich in this, in some of these discussions?
It depends on the urgency. You know, I can reach out. It depends on how fast we need to be making the decision.
Yeah, when we did the summer construction over the summer, I think we designated Lisa, who was the chair at the time.
If it's the pleasure of the board, then the board can say that nothing can be approved without Rich.
Again, I'm just throwing it out there, and what we, you want us to really come back on this next time anyway?
Would that otherwise, if, would you be the person then to make that decision?
Well, it would be me with the superintendent.
Maybe that's funny.
The, this particular first, I usually just call them a change order, even though technically it's a use of a construction allowance. This change order for $3,564, when it was communicated to me, the concern was getting the elevator ordered. We already know that we're not going to complete the elevator project by the beginning of school year. We're on a very tight critical path. So when it was discovered that the electrical power had to have larger conduit, larger capacity, higher gauge wire, additional circuit breaker equipment, a larger-capacity circuit breaker box, all of those in combination was going to cost $3,564. Unless we spent that money, we'd be ordering an elevator that we couldn't power. So, you know, as far as I was concerned, let's go ahead and do that. So I already gave you okay on that.
I'm just thinking back, I think the reason we did it that way was because Dr. Lamerson is gone, Bobner wasn't here yet. And we had a gap of time, so we had somebody work closely in the interim.
Right. I certainly wouldn't.
That was the reason.
Well, I was characterizing the topic of a use of a construction allowance in two areas. A, they're critical, necessary in order for the project to remain on schedule on a critical path. B, sometimes in the course of doing a project, an enhancement opportunity gets identified. So let's say we decided that in addition to doing some paving in a certain area, we decided to, well, let's propose to put in some curbing, some concrete curbing in addition to the paving. Well, that would be an enhancement to the scope of the project, a qualitative improvement. Then I would not, I would not give approval to the contractor to make an improvement in the scope of the project without prior board approval. We covered that during the construction, pre-construction meetings, saying, you know, what can the contractor expect to possibly be approved at an administrative level, and what would absolutely require board action. So in this case, I put this $3,564 into category A, which is, we need it to stay on a critical path. This is already going to improve.
Do you have a recommended dollar amount for this point?
In this context, I would say $10,000.
By the way, this is, Rich intended this to be a quick preview for our committee of the whole meeting.
Right.
So not to thoroughly, you know, flush this all out tonight. You're not acting on anything. You're just a preview of what we're going to be discussing.
The $3,564 is being presented as information tonight, and we're on track with the elevator as we need to be.
Yeah, I think that what you're proposing sounds totally fine, that critical stuff, we decide, do we have to do it? We have to do it. My other question, I guess, is, like, something like this electrical power upgrade, shouldn't have been, like, we know how much power the elevator is going to take. Should we be able to figure that out before we ordered it? Wasn't it possible for the architect at the time to say, well, you know, the conduit's not big enough, we need to not do it, or, I mean, it's, was someone, something missing there in that?
The response to that could be hummina, 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 which is, you know, I don't really have a good explanation.
Yeah.
Mr. Pacetti explains it, and I'll try and quote him accurately. He says that when they drew up the plans and specs, they were allowing for lesser costs electrical if the contractor could make it work.
Okay.
So his statement to me is that the plans and specs were drafted in a way that had the potential to save us money.
Okay.
Why put something out on the street in the plans and specs that has a beefed-up electrical system if it turns out that it's not really needed? A contractor could provide a solution without the high-muscle electrical system. Turns out that the low-muscle electrical system was not adequate.
Blight Park windows.
The last one is one that has really been communicated only by email up to this point. This hasn't been, you know, the board has not been apprised so clearly, in the sense that we're going to run a test or a sample installation of a potential option for the Blight Park windows. Hope's Steel Windows is really turning out to be about a $1.1 million cost because the Hope's Steel material is twice as expensive as aluminum. And, you know, there's no doubt that that is historically perfect, because what's at Blight Park is Hope's Steel Windows. The next option that we were looking at, and I'm describing that in number two, is St. Cloud, which would be an aluminum solution that would be as historically duplicative as possible, but we would still be going from steel to aluminum. And there may be some unavoidable change in the width of the profile. Might be a half-an-inch, might be three-quarters of an inch, as you're looking at the outline of each window. And then we looked at aluminum windows, and when we originally kind of drafted the potential cost, and I threw out a number of $700,000, that was really optimistic, because that really didn't take into account the need to have a historical preservation goal. So we pretty much eliminated number three as an optional, although it would be the least causing. This test idea that we're doing was, we were made aware of this by Carol Dyson, who was the chief architect for the Illinois Historical Preservation Agency. She said, talk to Cigna, see what they have to say. Cigna would leave our steel windows in place. There wouldn't be any asbestos abatement, because they would add a second pane of glass, thereby achieving a huge increase in the energy efficiency of the windows, going from single pane to double pane, but leaving most of the, well, leaving the material that currently exists in place.
Does the second window go in the, the second pane go on the outside or on the inside?
Right now, the sample, this company has done it both ways, but the sample or pilot installation would be on the outside. So this will give us a chance to scrutinize it very closely after the fact. It's in a storage room. We'll do it over spring break. It's being done by the company for free. That's my favorite word when dealing with contractors. We will be able to evaluate. We'll be able to invite the Riverside Historical Commission over. Charles Pfeiffer was the person in charge, and say, okay, here it is. Is this acceptable? It turns out to be acceptable. We would go from a high cost of $1.1 million to less than $300,000. So this is definitely worth looking into. If it gets rejected because it doesn't work, and, you know, is not acceptable, then we're back to these basic options. And any vendors or contractors that would, manufacturers that would compete, Hope's and St. Cloud. And I'm emphasizing that there may be other companies that can compete with Hope's and St. Cloud, but those kind of outline the options that are.
And we'll be back discussing this at committee of the whole.
We appreciate your looking into this Sigma Systems windows, because if you can do this, if this works, as it seems like it does from the documents that you shared with us and Board Book, and this cost savings, you know, this huge cost savings, preserving the architectural, you know, significance of the windows, I mean, it's a win all across the board basically.
Yeah.
So we're not having to go too much interrupting either to the.
Saves energy, you know, makes rooms more comfortable.
One of the most remarkable things to me, is that we, I think we've done some due diligence as far as checking references. I called a couple of sites, and Bill Radke talked to the Buildings and Grounds Directors at a number of the sites where this has been installed, and we really can't find any refutation of the companies being able to say that they have 30-year installations of this system. So, you know, 30 years ago, they took single pane, went to double pane, and the customers are not having complaints.
Fantastic.
So that is, you know, reason to be optimistic.
Will this topic also be discussed further at a committee of the whole?
Sure.
We'd like all of our projects to be cut by a factor of two-thirds if you could.
Yes, please. So after spring break.
We're always working on it. If we can see the opportunity, we go for it.
Was this, was our architect unaware of the Cigna systems, or how does?
I haven't found an architect that I've talked to that was aware of it. I mean, this, you know.
Although they've been around for 30 years.
I talked to, I talked to a couple of different architects about this, who I've known for a number of years, and they're going, wow, that's remarkable. Now, so I think it's fortuitous that Carol Dyson, who by definition is the chief architect for the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, you know, I think there's some credibility in her saying, check this company out.
Well, and I appreciate that Dr. Miller and whoever else reached out to Mr. Pfeiffer as our kind of liaison for that historical commission. It's really important.
The estimate we had was frankly developed even before I got on the board. It was by, you know, and it was just hanging around there. I don't know that they ever had a specific plan for what they planned to do.
Well, the estimate built into the bond issue was a Hope's Steel Window quote.
Was it? Okay. And that was, again.
$850,000.
All right. Thanks very much for that update.
Thanks.
I have one thing. Before I started the superintendent's report, my intent was to introduce our host principal, Mr. Peter Gatz, and to welcome you to his building. I apologize to Peter. He sat there thinking I had totally forgot him, and I, yes, I did, and I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll give you the intermission report.
All right. There you go. This is.
You know, when Merrill and Griffold asked me tonight, just to share a little bit about some of the things going on here at Central, and I think at times we get caught up in talking about new curriculum materials and purchases for technology, and I think it's good at times for the board to hear how the teachers are using some of that technology on a daily basis within the classrooms. And, you know, with the iPads and with the Chromebooks, teachers have really been able to take some of the instruction to another level here in the building. Two of the programs that they're using, one is called Kahoot, and the other one is called NearPod. And with both of them, they allow the teachers to design some lessons on their own with their own questions that are going along with the areas of learning that students are experiencing. And then using the device, the teacher can present questions in many different formats, and the students give real-time response to the teacher. So the teacher can see how kids are understanding different materials, stop and ask questions, and dig deeper with what they're discussing in the classroom. With NearPod, they can design lessons that, for example, with math, in a geometry lesson, can ask students to draw certain figures, and they use their fingers on the iPads to actually draw the figures. The teacher actually gets reports back for each of the individual students who have signed into the program, and they can see how those kids are learning, students that are stuck and not quite understanding what they should be learning, and allows for adjustment to the lesson as the teacher's presenting it to them and working with them through their material. So those are two ways that we're using this technology. Another one of my teachers has started to delve into Genius Hour, and if you aren't familiar with Genius Hour, you know, it's been kind of promoted in a lot of different places, but a real relevant place to talk about is Google. And what Google does with their engineers is they give them 20% of their time each week to kind of dig into their own projects and own areas of interest, to really get some buy-in from them. And how that flips over the classroom is that during the course of a week, a teacher would give about three 20-minute periods for students to kind of explore areas with a little bit of guidance, I mean, to areas that are of high interest to them, and hoping that engagement increases productivity during other times within the school day and within the school week. So those are three areas that we're kind of looking at, at different things within the building. And then the last thing I want to point out is that Mrs. Lyndon Murphy was spearhead with our recent project here within the community, along with the Central Student Council and the Central PTO. We did a food drive that benefited the Riverside Food Pantry, so right here in the community. And if you didn't happen to see the pictures, there was a full garage at the Murphy household, and three car trips that helped to donate supplies directly here to benefit families within the community. So I think that's a well worthwhile thing. Anytime the school's able to engage and give back to the community, it's a huge plus. So welcome, and thanks for being here tonight, Mr. Gatz. Listen, there's some great stuff going on at your school. It's great.
And I apologize.
Okay.
Should have started even with you.
So the next item on the agenda is the new business, which, first item in new business, is the Wellness Committee Report. That's Michelle.
In your board packets, you do have the memo to the board regarding the Wellness Committee recommendations. The Wellness Committee is formed to review the board policy and school wellness, and to reflect upon the policy to. reflect upon the policy to review and determine if as a district we are meeting those goals that are outlined in the board policy and to make some recommendations. So as you have the information, I'm just going to summarize. The committee consisted of three parent representatives from our schools, food service representative, nurse, social worker, PE health teacher, a school principal, and Dr. Powell and myself. The committee met three times, as outlined in your packet. And there are five goals that are presently within the board policy and school wellness, which is the goal for physical activity, goals for nutrition education, goals that promote student wellness in the school environment, goals that support parent-community partnerships that foster student wellness, and goals for school food providers. In reviewing those goals, we felt all goals were appropriate, but the one that we found that was missing would be a goal in social-emotional learning and wellness, which there is a draft copy in your packet, as, you know, we talk more and more about social-emotional learning and how significant it is and important to be considering the whole child. We thought that was a goal that we would like the board to consider to add into the wellness, wellness policy. In going through the other goals, goals for physical activity, the committee recommended that the district continuously seek and encourage physical movement within the school day. We did talk and reflect upon how that's currently happening, but there was a recommendation for focus on extracurricular opportunities at the elementary level. There are more at the junior high level, just as the middle school level, tons more to have those opportunities, but we would like to suggest a stipend position at each of the elementary schools to help foster some of those extracurricular activities in our elementary buildings. Another thing that we talked about was encouraging physical activity to and from school and how we can look about, upon that as far as walking to school, cycling to school. In a minute, I'll have Jaclyn Miller, who was on our committee, who really did a lot of research and came up with some suggestions, address that in a minute. The other goal that we looked at, we reviewed, was goals for nutrition education. We felt that it was important to add additional language to this goal, that we introduce allergy awareness. Many of our students have allergies. Some allergies are very significant and can be very threatening to children, and we wanted to make sure that we were instilling the awareness of that in our students, and we have some suggested language that was added, that is in your board packet to that goal. As far as goals that promote student wellness in the school environment, we saw that no additions or changes needed to be made to that area. Goals that support community and parent partnerships that foster student wellness, we are suggesting that administration continue to have conversations with the villages regarding traffic patterns and safety around our schools, ensure safety for students to be able to come, and again, too, to encourage some of that physical movement coming to and from school, that the traffic patterns are, are safe enough that students can ride their bikes or walk more safely to school. And to also work with police departments on possible bike safety programs to ensure safety for our students. And then goals for school food service providers, we're happy to say that we are meeting all the nutrition guidelines as we reviewed that. One thing that we discussed that may be helpful for parents and students also, too, is on the monthly calendar where the menus are put out to the families, is they had the nutritional breakdown of the main meal that is served. We thought that would be helpful for families and students to analyze their nutrition and how they're eating. And also, another recommendation was in order to provide another healthy lunch option would possibly be a salad bar. It was mentioned that the salads are very popular when there is a small salad serving on the plates, and so that was recommended, that that may also instill some healthy eating habits for our students. So the things to really consider, some factors to consider that are time-sensitive as you go through this is the possible elementary stipend positions, if we looked at that recommendation, the bike racks and placement of those racks to encourage cycling to school, and also another expense would be the possibility of purchase of a salad bar. And I would like Jaclyn Miller to add comments on the cycling, and some of her research, she did extensive research on bike safety and patterns and way to encourage cycling for students.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jaclyn Miller, and I was asked to look into two things, which is walking, encouraging kids to walk to school and encouraging kids to bike to school. As far as walking to school, it seems like the, the school District 96, I don't think can do a lot for that. I think it could encourage maybe the PTOs to help set up walking groups, walk, you know, people that live in a certain neighborhood to walk together. I think there is a perception in the community that it's not particularly safe to walk to school or to bike to school sometimes. Sometimes, like areas like crossing the railroad tracks, sometimes areas like right outside the schools, it can get quite dangerous. And so then a way that kind of encourages people to drive their kids to school because, you know, they think it's safer if they can pull up to the school, let their kids out and then pull out, but that, of course, makes it more dangerous for everyone else. So that's one way to, walking to school, I think, is something that could be encouraged by District 96 with the help of the PTOs and parents. As far as biking to school, I looked at all of the different schools, District 96. I asked the principals, I asked the PTOs what they thought about the current bike rack situation. It seems like for all the schools, except for Central and Hauser, there are sufficient bike racks. At Central and Hauser, I've had a number of comments from parents, from teachers, and from my own observation, that there are many days during the school year when the bike racks are at capacity. So I, we recommended that there should be additional bike racks. Now, one of the problems with Central and Hauser is, as you probably all know, the neutral configuration behind the school and the lack of space. So I had proposed certain areas for additional bike racks. The space is tight, but the primary recommendation that I would like to make is that if there are approximately 130 spaces for bikes between Central and Hauser, about 55, Central about, about 75, 78 max, I would say, behind Hauser, that those spaces are getting maxed out. So there should be an increase above that. So generous, and I would not say generous, I'd say modest amount to increase, that would be 25%, and the board should continue to look or have the administration look at increasing bike rack capacity if that increase is met. And I did provide, I did provide you with some of my research. I have additional research on different places where bike racks are available, costs, things like that. I'd be happy to provide.
I just want to thank the committee for their coming together on these three occasions and looking at this so carefully, and thank you for your consideration for the recommendations.
Thanks so much.
And some of these topics we need to bring back to the board because they would be, if you add stipends, it costs money. A salad bar, that could cost money. These are, these are things that we would not have asked you to act on tonight. These are things that a committee spent considerable time on thinking it would enrich the lives of our students, and that's why we're going to take it very seriously. We had some follow-up discussion on, on the bike racks. One of the things that is unique about Hauser is the kids only enter in the front of the school. And I always ask why, and it's, well, it's always been. Well, I don't know why they can't enter into door five, and if we're looking at, you know, we have assistant principal and principal, we can still greet kids coming in, one, they can split up, and if you're parking in the back, we can also then use some of the space over at Central to increase, use that bike rack, we need some additional ones there, along with increasing it over on, on the other side, and we can maybe take that 25% that Jaclyn was talking about, but also make it convenient or more, I guess, easier for kids to just enter the building rather than walk all the way around to get into the building on maybe a less comfortable day than, you know, some 75-degree day in the spring. So these things we're going to have to bring back to you.
I already asked the architect to look into, Miller is recommending a U shape for the bike racks so that bikes can be affixed in two locations rather than just one. So just in discussing that with the manufacturer, it's probably, I think, let's say a $6,000 to $8,000 change order or total go use of the construction allowance over what was included in spec. So I've asked the architect to go ahead and prepare a, you know, proposal for the board to consider and go to the U shaped compared to, what was spec was, was known as a wave style, still an upgrade over what we have, which is the most, least expensive and most traditional, but the U shape does have that benefit, and we verified that, that the space requirements for the U shape are the same as the, for what was spec with the wave style. So that'll be coming forward, and again, it's probably $6,000 to $8,000 in additional cost.
If I could make a couple of comments on that, there's a couple of reasons why the current bike rack system exists and the weight bike rack are not ideal, particularly for our situation with students. If you ever walk back behind the schools, you'll see that what happens, these kids are supposed to put their bike straight on and right in between the bars. Kids, a lot of kids don't do that. A lot of kids drift their bike over the grid, grab the top of it, or push their bike through so that they can lock frame and the wheel, or they'll put their bike, if, if, if this is the way the grid is, they'll put their bike this way. They'll take up five or six spaces. So one of the reasons why I was recommending the U is that it's very hard to misuse. So if you know you have 12 U's and a bike is parked on either side, it's really hard to get any other amount other than 24 bikes. You can't have a space for eight bikes. It's taken up by the young child if he's misparked the bike. The other thing I would just suggest on looking at quotes for the neutral racks is that I contacted a couple of other makers besides Belson, which may be able to buy a lower price than Belson. And also, this one maker is in Minnesota, and they say that their U racks are totally fine and self-supported. They can just stand on the ground with the rack with a rail underneath it, attach four of these U's. They can stand, freestanding on the ground, you can attach the bikes to it, and then if needed, those racks can be moved for several other reasons. When I talked to the representative of Belson, they were unsure because I think they don't make their racks themselves, that their racks would be appropriate to be freestanding. But I think that maybe if our, if other companies such as Dero, I can ask them, say, we would be.
I would just like to say, I was very impressed reading the Wellness Committee Report. It was very thorough, and it seems like you're really touching on what's important. So thank you so much.
Griff, one thing I was going to note about the entering in the back of the building, well, I think that's a great idea. I have a student who walks and basically cuts through the parking lot and goes around, and I've noticed on occasions when I drop them off that kids that do that, and not that I've seen any near misses or anything, but a lot of teachers are pulling in quickly to get a parking spot because the parking spots are limited.
Sneak in.
So I've seen a few situations where, like, I know my son will stop and, like, have to wait for that car to, like, because there's no, I mean, they try to make a clear path of where the cars are going, but it's kind of.
Very little room to maneuver.
Yeah, understandably. It's a little bit chaotic back there. So if they were going to open that back entrance, which I think a ton of people would use, we'd have to really think about how the cars are going into that back lot because it is.
I was thinking that, you know, in that regard, that maybe they could put up, you know, these mirrors that, you know, when you have blind curves, they put up one of these mirrors that are curved, and they can see around the corner.
Yeah.
Maybe they could put something up like that, you know, near Sanchi's house or something like that.
Or a more designated path that the students are supposed to be using, as opposed to my son, who I witnessed just crosses the parking lot like that.
They all are randomly across, right?
There's adults to kind of, not just guide the kids, but stop the cars.
Yeah.
There's not, at middle school rival, there's not adults in that.
Right, right.
So that would be some, that would be a way to look and.
Right, because there is a walkway, like, you know, the, the Central has a walkway, and so my son will literally walk out, walk through the walkway, and then just cut. Like, it's funny that he goes around one cone to walk through a walkway for five feet and then just cuts, you know, so if there, you know, there was a more designated plane, like, I just think if we do open that.
There's a big track along the fence there that's on the north side of the field.
Right.
Where mainly a lot of kids just cut through there.
Right. You see them cutting through the bushes kind of right there, yeah. I mean, if that would be an opportunity to make a more designated spot, just, just something to make, because, I mean, parking's crazy back there, and so it's definitely something to think about if we open that back entrance.
Mrs. Miller provided a links to two companies. I know KLOA is kind of expensive. There was another company that, I forget the name of it, that specializes in bicycle, and they did consulting with Madison School District 159. So I think I'll, I'll reach out to that company and just ask them for some kind of ballpark estimate for limited consulting engagement to, to review the flows.
Bike safety and traffic generally.
It is a very complicated, there's a complicated set of dynamics going on, and it sounds like this, this company has experience, at least, you know, actually, I was thinking about calling Ma, I was just looking at this today, that, well, first thing I should call is Madison 159 and to find out, did they have a good experience with this company? Assuming they did, I'd like to get a quote from them for consulting services because there's a lot of, I think a lot of people have different views of how things are working and where, you know, what options we should look at. I, you know, I, I think the idea that every student has to go around the building to the front of it instead of having the option to come in the building at the smokestack entrance, that's a change that really should be made.
Yeah.
Just for safety reasons. And I imagine that this company might affirm that as a, as a good idea.
Was there any reason we couldn't do that?
They've always, I asked that reason. It's always been that way.
Would we do it, or I mean?
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
As long as it's clearly designated where the student should be walking and where people should be.
And clearly communicated when we make, if and when we make.
We, we encourage drop-off in the back of the building.
Nobody does it, though.
Nobody uses it?
Not very, very infrequently. It's used for Central.
For the little ones.
But Hauser is supposed to go all the way around to the other side, on the west side.
Right.
So I think we're probably going to make that change in the future.
I shouldn't say nobody, it's not used frequently.
Okay, so Central, it's used for Central, but not for Hauser, is how I understand. But it sounds like we have some options there, and David, are you suggesting that, that this company, is it a consultant company that's?
I'd like to get a quotation, bring it back to the board, and say to the board, are you comfortable with bringing in a company? And, and you can review their qualifications and experience, but as it's represented on the, on the link that Mrs. Miller provided, it looks to me like this company is focused on the issues that we're currently kind of grappling with. How do you, how do you have students on foot and on bicycles move around kind of a complicated logistical setting in a way that's optimally safe and also achieve the goal of, as has been pro, I mean, proposed, let's, you know, increase the bike parking capacity by approximately 25%.
So is the next step, then, to come up back with some specific actionable recommendations?
Right. Either at the COW meeting or the April meeting.
And a change order.
Okay, right.
Any other comments about the Wellness Committee Report?
Thank you. She's up for the next one, too.
Thanks very much for that. Thank the Wellness Committee for all their work on this, it's great.
Yeah, and I would assume we'd be wanting to review this at the Policy Committee meeting, any recommendations that you guys brought.
Would that be, well, never mind, but would that require a change in policy?
So the goals that they outlined were all in policy six colon five zero.
Right.
And they recommended the addition of a goal and the addition of.
And changing of some language.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you speaking about the SEL component?
That was the goal that they, so this would.
Yes, the SEL, and then some wording to change to highlight.
Right, so we could bring this to a Policy Committee meeting.
And nutrition and allergies.
Yep.
Five minutes.
Are you ready for the next one?
You better take less than five minutes because we're only talking about five minutes.
There's a recommendation we would like to make to alter only the afternoon session of the early childhood program for the early learners. Presently, right now, the drop-off, the program begins at 12:20 with the whistle and 2:50, and there is extra congestion at Howard with the elementary students dismissing at the same time. So what we would like to recommend is that the afternoon session begin at 12:15 and dismiss at 2:45 to alleviate some of the congestion at the end of the day, but also to give parents who also have elementary children at the other buildings time to safely get back to get their other children if needed.
They're at Central Ames and makes, gives them five minutes to get them all.
So it's a little bit tough, and we want to make sure that everyone's safe coming to and from school. So we would like to ask for consideration that recommendation to change it by five minutes.
Thank you. No discussion, but to come back for action as a consent agenda item if we have no, no problems with it.
No problems. No problems.
Next, moving on to old business, I forgot to say something earlier, so you're not the only one to forget something to say, Marjorie.
Good.
Forgot to thank or to congratulate Ms. Janik for winning prestigious Fulbright Fellowship. A very prestigious award. It's a great distinction for our teaching staff and we really congratulate her for, you know, for getting that.
Absolutely.
Twenty-five years as superintendent, I had less than five people that have had that Fulbright scholarship. It's a great honor. And I think she's going to bring a great, a lot back to the kids here. That's a good part of it.
So the first item in old business is the staffing approval of the increase in the number of full-time staff. So is there a motion to approve an increase of 4.5 full-time equivalents for licensed staff members as specified in the 2016-17 staffing document at an approximate cost of $225,171?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, what does the $225,171 represent? Salary, benefits, I mean, how inclusive is that of full cost?
David, I believe it was, you took the average salary, because I think you and Pat worked on that Monday. You took the average salary and multiplied it times 4.5 without the benefits, is that correct?
$5,003,500 is the, 03 is the...
So it represents a salary.
Salary.
Salary, right.
Just like to know what I'm hoping for.
And again, the 4.5, just to break it down, you're going to reduce two in the elementary, you're going to gain two in the, and the others are mandated.
Well, those were on the attachments, right? All those extensive attachments.
Yeah, I have it in me, but...
So Griff, just for the, perhaps the publics who haven't read this and we're being, maybe we aren't being, oh, we are being filmed tonight.
Yes.
Could you just go over those 4.5?
Well, real quickly, there's no change at Hollywood, no change at Blythe Park. There's a reduction of 1.0 full-time equivalent at Ames and Central. At Hauser, there's an increase of 3.5 FTE. The breakdown on that, total change in classrooms, teachers is 1.5 FTE, FTE, full-time equivalents. English language learners, there's an increase of .5, one-half person full-time equivalent. Bilingual teachers, these are mandated, an increase of 1.0 FTE. District special ed staff, again mandated, increase of 1.5 FTE, which gives you the total of 4.5 FTEs, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, Margie, could you call it all, please?
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Mrs. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next item is the annual report. Annual report is a proposal to, sent out through the mail to every household in the district, a report on the school districts year. Is there a motion to approve the creation of an annual school district 96 report at a cost not to exceed $1,500 to prepare the report and mailing cost not to exceed $10,000?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Have we made this out before?
I think in the, I know under Dr. Burnett, they used to send out quarterly and annual reports. I don't know when that was discontinued, if it was discontinued under Lambertson or...
Been a long time.
But I...
Yeah, I don't know very much about it, but somebody recently told me we used to do newsletters in the village, in the water bills, too, or the district did. But again, I didn't...
Well, it lines up with our strategic plan goal, so I absolutely have no problem with it. It's what we should be doing.
We need to communicate.
Right. Further discussion?
No, just wanted to know if you can't afford it.
Margie, could you call it all, please?
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And the next item is security needs. Is there a motion to approve security resources at a cost not to exceed $34,000, including 15 exterior cameras and one door fob?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion on this security camera motion?
My only discussion, question is, this is what, at the last meeting, we asked the administrators to come together and decide what was most important in this presumably place.
They got them all in a room, the five principals, and I said, you're not going to get 10 and you're not going to get three. We're going to get something reasonable for everybody and they're all going to be outside cameras only. There's no inside cameras. And so that's what it represents when they got it all on the same page.
Good, so this is a meeting of the minds and this is the top priorities?
Right.
Okay, great.
And is this, is this what they wanted?
Well, some individuals, I think were going overboard and probably would have asked for more cameras.
Yeah.
So, no, this is a negotiated, more reasonable agreement, so there's equity among the five buildings.
So I was just, the question was more things outside of cameras, you know, in addition to cameras.
Well, they did, they did have the one fob over at Ames that we've included in here, which, it's an expensive item, it's three or $4,000 to put in a fob in a building.
And what is that again?
That's, that's the, what do you call it, the keyless...
It's a total door replacement that has fob capability. Meaning you can swipe it electronically to open the door along the door handle.
So you don't want to do that throughout the building, you want to limit the number of doors you do that with, but Ames has made it an argument for safety purposes to have another door.
Because it gets propped open right now, it's used to light.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
I know we had talked about getting those strips on the doors for certain doors in case of intruders and things like that.
And I know David, Bill's looked into that.
It was a minor expense.
Minor expense, it's not, it doesn't cost much.
Seven discussed.
I'll have to check with Bill again.
I know we have certain wooden doors that it wouldn't work with, but...
I think we were full steam ahead on all of the metal frame doors.
Yeah, right.
And we had purchased the strip, the stripping that is magnetic that was recommended by Frankfurt School District, and they have positive experience with it. And I believe we've actually deployed metal stripping where there's metal. Where there's wood, where, Bill had another, I'll have to check with him again, he had an alternative...
He had another way of doing it, and he was showing me. But his intent is to add those to many doors as possible.
Yeah, we just remember it.
Now, to further answer Randy's question, outside lighting was one of the recommendations.
Okay.
That's something is a very sensitive issue that I've learned in this community, that you don't just put lights up anywhere you want, whether they're for safety or not. And we thought we would delay any decision on that and maybe have some further discussion in our facilities committee because, again, outside lighting is something that's not a, something really popular around here, especially if it's any...
It is a real business.
Okay, that kind of lighting. We're not talking about that kind of lighting.
So there's a plan to discuss that, though, because I know there's...
That's not off the table totally, but it's not something that we would quickly recommend because we know the sensitive nature of our community here, that large, you know, intensive light.
You want to spot this across the entire front of the building, that's your say.
Yeah.
So David, the issue with those strips, I would just like to have a little bit more conclusive report as to whether those have been installed and what the status and so forth.
Yeah, I think they've been installed in a number of locations. I'll have the ability to give us a full report. And I'm recalling that the mechanism that he's proposing for the wooden doors is something that attaches to the top of the door. And I'll ask him for, I've given him the green light to go ahead and explore these options, so I'll get a statement.
Thank you.
Well, for whatever it's worth, I wish I could remember the name of the governmental institution, but I read recently that some agency had a recommendation of $2 million to install cameras, and that was deemed to be too high, so the administrator went to Costco, bought them themselves and had them installed, was able to capture a security breach on those cameras and still hadn't been reimbursed for charging them to Costco on their own personal credit card. So I don't know if we're going to do kind of...
You can buy those for your doors, for your doorbell for like a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Great, I mean, they go to your phone, they'll record, I mean, it's like, I mean, their technology's very good. Now you get, you know, 180-degree coverage, I mean, it's...
So I'm not going to suggest we go to Costco, but somebody did. Somebody did.
The expense built into this is for the recording equipment.
Right, nobody's monitoring this live, you know.
I think for your home use, you're not anticipating a terabyte of storage.
Right.
The, one of the main reasons why cameras are useful is so that you can go back three months or a month or yesterday and look at everything. So you're buying equipment that can record on an ongoing basis and will not lose that stored data, all of those images. The, I think the actual cost of the fob door is like $6,000 and we're coming in about $28,000 for the, for the cameras.
Cameras, okay.
And the cameras in, you know, that cost of the camera also includes that head end. Includes the head end, the disk storage, and the installation. So that's, that's why the cost...
I recall this story was like about a prison and, but I had to think of how long we've been talking about this and she just finally just went out and did it and hadn't even been reimbursed when it caught quite an incident, apparently.
I may regret sharing with you my stream of consciousness, but we have...
Don't. Well, we'll know in a minute.
We'll let you know.
We have a, we have an assistant principal who is looking at having people check in and doing the background checks on the spot. This is a very common technology used in schools. And we're looking at taking that step. And it's going to be a proposed budget item for the 16-17 school year.
It's a security issue, too, right?
Yeah, that might be one area where you might consider one interior camera so that as somebody is being checked in and that verification of their identity is taking place, you're also capturing video on that particular location. So, you know, that might be one thing that we bring back that does fall into the heading of one interior. In a critical location where you, you know, we were surprised to hear that the estimates from principals are, you know, between a dozen and 24 visitors per day.
A dozen a day, which I was a little surprised, of visitors to every elementary, two dozen to like Hauser, a day.
Although, how many of them are PTO parents?
Yeah, it's a variety of reasons, right. Probably majority.
From what I've seen in there, it's a lot of us, you know.
That makes it warranted to have some kind of survey.
So your point is that that isn't quite a number, that's quite a number, the 12 or 24?
I think 24 people going in and out that, but I would agree with Sherry during the day.
I would just check the list and see how many people are not actually registered as volunteers, because we do have a volunteer sheet that you fill out as a parent when you want to go into the building.
So you're saying 12 total?
I'm just saying, who is, you know...
12 a day.
So that leaves all the PTO people and...
Right.
Not that you love sons and druthers, but...
But if you recall the, you talk about the outdoor cameras and how we can go back and look at a situation that occurred maybe a month ago. When, when we were interviewing for the new superintendent, we were presented with a scenario, if you, if you recall, how he was able to, to go back and look at a camera and an incident that happened in the parking lot, you know, a parent, maybe parent to parent or parent to child confrontation. And he had that to refute, you know, or to back up his case, to... So I think there is a good reason, you know, it's not just having them out there, but we're, we can use these to our advantage.
Call the question? Any other, any other comments about the security motion?
Only that there's a minor discrepancy about the fob. It says it's no, wasn't going to exceed four, but it's actually six. So as long as it's built into that $34,000.
It is.
And then it's, it all adds up.
So it's really, it's about six for the, the door.
Right, I think there's a discrepancy.
All right, so Margie, could you call it all, please?
Mrs. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, we've already talked about the K5 MAFPA update, so we now go, come to our second public comment period. Are there any public comments?
So I'm a stakeholder in the morning and aftercare discussion and I just wanted to encourage further discussion.
Could you just state your name and address?
Oh, Kristen Evans, and I'm an Ames parent and Hauser parent. So we've been using morning and aftercare with PAVY for six years. And I think this year, I remember thinking about it last year and instantly, you know, like panicking because nobody wants a change in their childcare. But now that I've had a year to think about it and it's coming up again, in addition, some of the anchors of the program that took care of our kids last year have moved over to the Park District, Riverside. I just would encourage the board to maybe have a bigger discussion about tapping into community-based, a community-based service provider, especially knowing that the same, the same caregivers after school and before school also work in the summer at the day camps where our kids attend. So I just, and also, I really didn't feel that the survey was all that scientific. I don't know, Sherry, if you would agree. I know you're a science...
I don't use it, I don't use the...
I know, but, I know you're a scientist, you might want to take a look at it, but it was yes or no. It was like, do you like it? Yes or no? It's like, usually there's five, you know, really good, sort of good, neutral, not good.
We didn't use the Likert scale, you're right.
Right, so it's, I don't know that, you know, I think we could have maybe done a better job in the survey if we really wanted to take a good look at it. So I just wanted to make a comment that maybe we could talk more about it instead of, just seemed like it wasn't going to go anywhere, so I thought I would make a comment about it.
Well...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? All right, with that, then, future meeting dates, we talked a little bit, currently all the meeting dates are at Hauser, but we've been talking about making around to all the schools, so would everyone be open to having one of the meetings at Hollywood and one of the meetings at Ames?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not, but, no, I'm not. I like the comfort of the...
It is, it is our policy to...
I understand that, but we haven't been doing it for God knows how. No, I mean, again, I don't have a big objection to it, but we like the, the, Bob and I've had this discussion many times, or a couple of times. Well, let me back up. One of the proposals that it would have been cheaper was to have our meetings in the Village Hall or in the Township Hall. It would have been cheaper from a camera filming standpoint. And we elected not to move it there because we like the comfort of the chairs at Hauser. And I would say this is a, this here is an uncomfortable arrangement. And so I'm just looking...
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but I would have to respectfully disagree. I like, I like going to the, I like the idea of going to the different schools, having a principal be able to give feedback. I think it draws in different groups of parents, like, I know when we were at Blythe, there was parents there that don't normally... So I feel like it's us reaching out to the community a little bit more, so I do think that, for me, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I know, it's a different opinion, but I like it.
What's your other opinion about that?
I'm indifferent.
It's a policy, we have to follow it.
If our policy says that, we should follow our policy until such time it's changed.
Okay. Randy, do you have an opinion? indifferent, Sherry?
I enjoyed the Blythe visit.
I enjoyed the Blythe visit, I agree with Linda, I saw people we don't normally see at meetings, just because they're across the street, so I'm okay with it.
So what if we do our next business meeting at Hollywood, and then the business meeting after that at Ames? So that would be, okay, so that would be, upcoming meetings are March 24th, we have a closed, it's a closed session, right? Closed session, board self-evaluation on March 24th. At 6:30 on April 5th, we've committed a hole in Hauser at 7:00 PM. On April 19th, that's the next regular business meeting, and why don't we do that one at Hollywood, 6:30, it'll be closed session, 7 o'clock would be open session. April 26th, we have a workshop with the IASB for the new superintendent and the board, and that's going to be a closed session as well.